Well, let us call the meeting to order at 5:30. I'm glad to hear that. We have a call to order and a roll call please, Dave. Are we ready, Dave? Let me ask you that.
I- okay. It's going. Alderman Boyd? Not present. Alderman Cohn? Not present. Commissioner Vanton?
Present.
Commissioner Boas?
Uh-huh.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Conway?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples?
Present.
Commissioner Reese? Not present. Commissioner Vines?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Ann Trister?
Present.
And you have a call?
We have a call, thank you.
Chairman, you've noticed that we have a new planning commissioner tonight. Steve Conway, the mayor's chief of staff, is her destiny to the planning.
Welcome, Commissioner Conway.
Well, thank you.
On many things. Before we do the approval of minutes, we have some other guests with us. Why don't we go ahead and just get them to introduce themselves before we get started? We know who they are, we start here.
Phil Moyer is doing specials.
I'm Cardi Nash, student from Washington.
I'm Fred Young, student from Washington.
Mary Burton, standing in the microphone.
Michelle Duffy.
All right, and we have a commission of, just join us and another gentleman. You're with your home.
I'm with their first class.
Okay, very good. With that, the first order of business is the approval of the meeting, uh, the minutes for May 6. It's been moved, I hear, it's been moved in the second bit? With that, we have a roll call please.
Alderman Boyd?
Hi.
Commissioner Vanton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Upstate.
Commissioner Conway?
Upstate.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Trister Rother?
Aye.
Motion passes with, uh, five, six ayes.
Okay. With that, the minutes are approved. Uh, just for a bit of brevity, Commissioner Conway, we generally try to get started at 5:30, get around 8:30 or so. If only.
Trying to make it.
There is a two minute rule on Don Rozen. With that, uh, we have a couple of items. The first one is, uh, nineteen, the rezoning of Pope Brilliant, and who's going to be presenting?
That will be me.
Well, then it's yours.
Thank you very much.
And we have another commissioner who also just joined too.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
The first action item on your agenda is for the road, for a rezoning position for 3614 and 3616 Pope Brilliant. Uh, the subject site is shown on the screen for you now. The rezoning area is approximately one, sorry, .13 acres and is a currently vacant lot. Uh, just to give you guys a little bit of background, um, the project was before the commission, uh, through a different application previously, a couple of months ago, for consideration of an alley vacation, you may remember, um, to the immediate east of the subject site. This request received a recommendation of approval. The intent of the petitioner is to ultimately build a church and community center and associated parking. Uh, the plan is on the screen for you now. Uh, this is the site plan which shows the approximate layout of the proposed building. The highlighted area in yellow is, uh, the area being requested, I'm sorry, is the area being requested for the rezoning. The area in green is the area which was approved by the commission for the alley vacation in February, and the rezoning request, uh, is, if the rezoning request petition is approved, petitioner intends to consolidate the parcels outlined in black on the screen. Given that the subject site is zoned B, multiple family dwelling districts, the remaining parcels are zoned H, area of commercial district. Petitioner is for you this evening to rezon, to request a rezoning for the area to H to match the adjacent zoning districts and ensure the consolidation does not result in a dual zone parcel. The strategic land use plan shown on the screen now does make the subject site as neighborhood development area, which is intended to be suitable for associated neighborhood services and opportunities for replating. Given that the proposal aims to provide a use which those are going to be, that might ensure that it is a common use, the land use plan and, uh, is therefore a common use. In addition, in addition to strategic land use plan, staff has reviewed against the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood plan, uh, and that designates the area as residential and, uh, commercial to the east. Given that the proposal is to build a church and community center which is compatible with either commercial or residential uses, staff has concluded that the request does comply with the neighborhood plan as well. Finally, I'll, I'll quickly scroll through these photos of the adjacent site and the adjacent area, um, given that we have already seen the site before. Uh, this is the alley with this other site on the right, and, uh, lots of people saw that as a business on the west. The home, their homes, uh, just adjacent to it and across the street, uh, to the north. This is an image of the site, uh, to the north of that, which across, uh, Brand and to the east of the subject site. And this is the funeral home across Brand from the subject site. This is the house on the subject site, it is a worship center, uh, which, uh, owned by Oaks of Branches and Worship. And finally, this is the site to the south of the subject site, which the petitioner owns and intends to use as off-site parking. Staff has reviewed the proposed rezoning petition and finds that the request is in accordance with the strategic land use plan, neighborhood development area, as well as the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood plan, and recommend approval.
So, Mr. Chairman, we wish we had be able to look through both of these items at the same time that we've seen, uh, and, but Reverend Davis, who addressed us when he was here before, is also in the audience tonight, but we do recommend approval.
Well, firstly, welcome Reverend Davis. You gave us a wonderful opportunity last time. Uh, welcome any comments you want to make first before we open up with questions. Anything different?
Uh, no, yes, I'm still excited and truly will be delighted to meet you.
All right. Questions, I'll first open for Commissioner Young, since she's on the phone, and we won't forget, if you have any questions at this time, Commissioner Young?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, so any commissioners around the table at this point? Questions?
So, I'm just curious on how sort of this site plan came to be and why you have, you got a corner lot, why do you have parking surrounding the building as opposed to being a more sort of urban site plan?
Well, that was, we, our, can, uh, and, uh, we're, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh.
So it's not, doesn't have anything to do with your particular programming of the building, it's just sort of what the architect came up with?
Mr. Lloyd?
Uh, Reverend, I just met you Monday, I see you Monday, at the Greenleaf Ranch opening. So where's your church currently?
Apparently, we are in the old scene, passing, uh, we, uh, seven, uh, hole directly behind the door.
Okay, so this is a brand new facility and this, okay.
If I may, and, uh, he's a tenant at the location you're at. His church, uh, which his father was the reverend at for somehow many years.
Uh, he answered for forty eight, forty, yeah.
It was on the north side of Cass and the NGA footprint.
Okay. Okay, it, do we have a actual rendering of, like, the building itself with the parking? I mean, because the parking stood out for me. Do we have a?
We do not have a rendering, one not provided, uh, with the, but I'll put the site plan up just for reference.
Yeah, that, that's kind of interesting. The parking kind of wraps around the facility, rather than traditionally, the parking lot kind of stood off in the back or something like that.
So are all of these, those parcels or parcels that, that we all, we utilize, what is good?
No, I understand that. I'm, I'm just looking at from a design perspective. I mean, it's church and you guys love it. I'm fine with that, I'm just out of curiosity, you know, looking at the design, that, um, parking, first thing you see is parking around the building versus really showcasing the beauty of the building. Kind of like in the urban setting, for me, I'm a bunch of urban guy and I hate garages that like stick right out in front of the house. First thing you see is a garage, you know, we see the beauty of a house. Um, so, I was just kind of, it's kind of, just Mr. Vanton asked about not really being an urban design, but more like a suburban strip mall design. Not to be hypercritical, but, you know, it's, I think, I'm just speaking to me, and I'm just partial to urban stuff. Um, and was just kind of curious as to, is the parking around the building because it facilitates the ease of getting in and out of the building?
That was a part of it. It's a free, a large, um, traffic flow on Grand, and it's really hard to enter and exit from, uh, the Grand.
So, K I came up with this creative design, is that right?
Along with, uh, two other architects.
What would it mean for you if you had to redesign, just by, site plan wise, not necessarily the building itself, but reposition it on the site? Yeah, just reconfigure how the parking and buildings sit on the site. Like, is that going to exponentially drive up your costs for some reason?
Yes.
Yeah. Can I just ask for some clarification, just 'cause I don't know about you guys, my site plans here is cluttered and it's hard for me to see what's what.
Sure.
Um, are those like lighter gray shaded areas, are there parking spaces around the perimeter?
They are, I believe they indicate, um, a different type of pavement, it might be for MSB requirements.
And then, these are different parcels, not part of the project over the blank space to the?
Correct, those are piece of parcels.
Okay. I'm gonna echo what's been said, um, by fellow commissioners. I just, um, to me, without seeing a rendering, it's hard to envision, but, uh, to me, I feel like there's a lot of, um, opportunity to really make this project a landmark for the neighborhood that would be truly a beacon and a welcoming place. Um, to me though, you know, when the first thing you see is accommodations for cars and parking, that automatically, to me, it seems like it has the opposite effect, like a place that is not accessible and open, and I wonder if there's, um, a creative alternative that would allow you to accommodate the person that you, while still keeping an, um, an urban function for that very important corner. Um, because what's built here is going to be here for a long time, and, um, you want to kind of maximize its appeal and its impact on the neighborhood as an urban standpoint, and I would, I would just encourage maybe a more urban site plan. Um, you know, think of what are the, what are the, um, opportunities here, like, in a urban setting that don't exist in the suburbs, and how do you leverage that and make this the best project it could be? But again, you know, maybe if I saw a zoning, I'd, I'd be more comfortable with it, with the site being a little hard to envision.
We appreciate all the comments and concerns for that. As a pastor, I simply support you and your efforts, saying that as a, as a pastor of church, you always do want people to see that you're a lively church, and parking does help that visual, if they see cars and people think that the church is open and active, where if it's a building, there is, you can't tell what the activity is, that's just, that's psychological and church function. Uh, but with that, we're looking into zoning, so the question is, is there any motions to approve the zoning for the, the change in zoning?
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Commissioner Conway, and we have a roll call please for the approval.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanton?
Nay.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Nay.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Ann Trister?
Aye.
And motion passes with, uh, the seven ayes and two nays.
Thank you very much. We still look forward to the church being a, a, a good community member and hope things work out.
Reverend Davis?
Yes.
So one of the things that we did here was we looked at this as a zoning, as a use at that corner, uh, as a church use. Your design review will actually occur when you submit for a building permit at the building division and every shot. If any of the comments you've heard tonight get to be incorporated, that would be fine when they get out.
Okay, with that, the next item on the agenda is 3019 REZ, and looks like Roman's presenting.
He is. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, this is a proposed rezoning of a single parcel, 1500 Old Ford Mall, Church Street, of the B two family dwelling district, to the, um, half commercial district. The site is very small, as you can see, it's less than a tenth of an acre. It's located at the, um, southwest corner of Salisbury Street and Blair Avenue in the Hyde Park neighborhood. It's also located in the Hyde Park local store district. The existing use on the site is a three-story mixed-use building with a one-story commercial building attached to it. As you know, the B zoning district doesn't allow any commercial uses at all. A series of commercial uses has been operating at that building for quite some time by getting bearings from the board adjustment periodically. The petitioner would like to rezon the site so that commercial uses would be allowed as a use by right, and thereby avoiding the, uh, the costly and time-consuming process of getting a variance, uh, from the board of adjustment every time a new commercial tenant is seeking to locate at that particular property. The petitioner is Envy Properties LLC, which owns that parcel. Um, one of the partners is Michelle Duffy. I'm here tonight, uh, she's been active in a number of renovation efforts, um, in Hyde Park, and if she's available, and will be available for any questions. Uh, this is an aerial photo of the, uh, office site, again, it's located at Salisbury Street, um, and, uh, Blair Avenue, Salisbury Street is primarily a commercial and a mixed-use street, while Blair is more of, uh, more of a residential character. Located directly across the street from the rezoning site is Hyde Park, and, uh, located nearby is Holy Trinity Church and School.
What'd you say against the church?
Oh.
Oh, it's your fault.
I was on this thing, what's with?
So, Roman, can you continue?
You've seen the types. There you go. Wet your fingers.
Sorry about that delay. Okay, so, uh, this is a zoning map of the area, and as you can see, Salisbury Street, Twentieth to Blair is zoned B two family dwelling district, showing in yellow. The stretch of Salisbury from Blair to Eleventh Street, uh, on the map there, and, and that red pink color is a neighborhood commercial space. And I mentioned before, the B two family dwelling district does not allow residential uses, but we've been having, uh, commercial uses at that site for quite some time, um, and the petitioner is requesting that the site be zoned to the half neighborhood commercial district, so that in future cases, when a commercial tenant is interested in locating that site, uh, they would not have to go through the, uh, the variance process. This is a, uh, photo of the, uh, the rezoning site, and as you can see, it's a three-story mixed-use building, um, with a one-story, um, building attached to it. The ground floor is a vacant, uh, commercial storefront, which is located, I understand, that used by a store. The other two floors of the building are occupied by a, uh, single housing unit. Um, the zoning section was able to, the detective board had found that the, uh, that ground floor commercial space was present when that building was constructed back in 1890, so there's a long history of commercial uses at this particular site. Uh, two other photos of the rezoning site, one showing the frontage along Salisbury on the left, and, uh, the frontage along Blair Avenue on the right. Uh, immediately adjacent to the rezoning site along Salisbury and the four family buildings shown on the left, the remainder of that block is shown on the right. Uh, along Blair Avenue, immediately adjacent to the rezoning site is that single family building, which is also zoned by, owned by the petitioner, and the remainder of the block is shown on the right. Uh, just to the north of the park is Hyde Park, and as you can see, at the corner of the park, there is a fire station, uh, which looks very, uh, close to the area of church building, except for that, uh, the right storefront, just in the side. Um, catty corner to the site is a recently, um, renovated mixed-use building, and further down the street is, uh, some more mixed-use buildings, and across the street from rezoning site, uh, is, uh, another mixed-use building occupied by Quarterstone Cafe, which I understand is a neighborhood institution, and, uh, the remainder of that block is, again, primarily occupied by mixed-use, uh, buildings. The, uh, city strategic land use plan, uh, designates the, uh, rezoning site as well as much of Salisbury Street as a specialty mixed-use area, which encourages a mix of uses. Uh, this proposed rezoning, uh, would make it easier for commercial users to locate, uh, in this, uh, mixed-use building, and therefore the, uh, rezoning is in conformity with the strategic land use plan. Uh, the rezoning would achieve three objectives according to the zoning criteria, including the fact that it would provide additional commercial and residential options. Uh, the proposed rezoning is in conformity with this loop that we just presented out and, uh, that's the, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we. If you have any answer, any questions, then you stop the, and the properties, if you'd also hear.
Well, we invite the committee to give any information first before we open questions up. Any, yes, anything you would like to say, questions?
Well, we've been active in the Hyde Park neighborhood, I guess, since about 2000. We've renovated 50 buildings and built another 133 homes, and we purchased this property actually to protect the corner, because we had done building across the street, and then it went down, uh, on Salisbury, so that where the River Willie at 1435 Salisbury is located, um, we renovated that a few years ago, and didn't want to see this building be purch, it was for sale, be purchased and then just sit there. So it would be much easier, and we'd spend less time, uh, marketing the building if it was zoned properly, so that's the reason.
And I understand they could, the top floor is one residential unit?
Yes, um, it, we did that because when we were trying to figure out how to use it as, um, a second and a third floor apartment, um, we would have had to have built, uh, kind of an elaborate, um, stairway structure on the side, and so at that time, when our outreach was looking for a location, and so what we did is we worked with them, and rented a five-bedroom, um, household, and then after the first winter, would have become a residence for five women, and so take it as the Golden Girls. But yes, very nice park on the side here.
First, uh, I'll open the floor for Commissioner Young, if she has any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners around the table? Commissioner Boas?
What's true is that we don't know where to open the space, so all the parks are zoned, uh?
Yes.
So am I coming out there, so?
Yep.
But I'm going to open it, right?
But when we switched the area lines, I didn't remember the height of the space. Okay, any questions?
Okay. Any other commission questions? With that then, are there any motions for the recommended staff recommendation? I'll give two approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If we can have a vote please for the rezon, for the acceptance of the proposed, or 19REZ.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Ann Trister?
Aye.
And motion passes with all present voting aye.
So as we switch, uh, presenters, I'm going to just compliment, uh, Michelle Duffy and her long-term service in this neighborhood, she rattled off all these renovations and renovations. The rolling catty corner across from this was a particular unique challenge. It was a vacant LRA building for a long, long time. Uh, it's now a beautiful renovation with a cafe in the first floor. It had a very unique characteristic, uh, in that it had a three-story outhouse.
Wow, a three-story outhouse. You're really a man. You don't know, you're just a story. What is doing just now, ladies, you gotta come back?
So I have a follow-up question for Michelle on that. So, Michelle, were you the director of LRA when that building was vacant?
Yes.
Wow.
In fact, the number of ones that we renovated, I guess, is rare.
Is it?
So speaking to the three-story outhouse in the back, Freeman was very upset when we had to take it down. We had to take it down because you could just lift the bricks off, you know?
Oh.
All the way from the third floor down. But Jan Cameron had pictures of one that looked like before it had really deteriorated, and it really was, a three-story, um, modern something, different modern something.
That's an out of town.
It gives the same shit, but it's all down here.
The military, we do everything horizontal.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have my mind on, uh, tend to item A, but it's too late. I know it doesn't matter, but just for the rest of?
We would have to call for a reconsideration. You can reconsider.
Okay. Having these images on the presentation side, I'm able to reconsider the vote on agenda item number one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for reconsideration, agenda item number one, the, Jeff Bender, you're speaking of 19REZ, or any, uh, 220819REZ. Any opposition to that, and if we can have a roll call vote please?
All right, Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanton?
Nay.
Commissioner Boas? Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Ann Trister?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move that we adopt the attendant number one. She just voted to reconsider it, now we have to adopt it again.
Second.
Previous rule.
Any objection to previous rule? Hearing none, previous rule accepted to adopt, uh, item 2819REZ. Mr. Conway, that's why you're here. That's why we're saying eight thirty. With that, the next item is 2919VTX, and hence why Don brought pizza.
Uh, twenty, so this one is actually the last agenda item on our agenda tonight. Uh, the shorthand is we call ourselves the planning commission, we're really officially the planning and zoning commission for the city of San Luis, so that's why we're reviewing those items, uh, against the plan. We also therefore review and initiate, uh, changes to the zoning code. Uh, ultimately, the, uh, completion of the change of the zoning code requires a board bill and taking it to the board of parliament. But tonight, following a lot of staff work, uh, on many people's part, uh, and just we will introduce that team, uh, we're going to present a very detailed, thought-out, uh, but it's going to take a little while to present, um, legislation that changes the zoning text, not the zoning map. Is that it?
Thank you. Uh, as Don mentioned, uh, this was an effort with, uh, the zoning administrator, Mary, who was also sitting here today, and, and, you know.
sitting here today, and City Council's office, Rebecca Wright. We have worked over the last plus or minus month and a half or so, looking at best practices and what other jurisdictions have done to regulate medical marijuana, and looking at what the state of the constitutional amendment two provided for guidelines within its context for what we can and can't do. So with that, the items on the screen now are those that the very constitutional amendment two, which was passed in November by the voters, gave us to start with. It is quite a lengthy document, but what's relevant is it provides a ton of definitions, which we mirror in our proposal, and it allows local governments the ability to regulate the time, place, and manner of use uses, which we are proposing to do, and it provides a stipulation that unless allowed by the local government, no new medical marijuana related facility shall be initially sighted within 1,000 feet of any then existing elementary school, secondary school, child daycare center, or church. So it does allow us as a local government to make that determination, but the default is that 1,000 feet or lower. So in looking at that, we chose 13 scattered industrial sites which were available on the market at the time that we were doing this research. And we chose industrial sites because that would be the type of sites that would potentially be the most likely to meet the 1,000 foot buffer. That theory goes that if, you know, if a retailer loves intense use, wanted to locate in a commercial use, that they would potentially have a more difficult time locating, but so we're looking, we're trying to find the most potential for industrial sites. The 13 sites are kind of shown here on the map. Of those 13 sites, every single one had a conflict. It was located within 1,000 feet of an elementary school, secondary school, child daycare center, or church. The sort of zoomed-in analysis is provided in your pocket and on a link in the commission's packet on the website. And then also 12 of them had at least two conflicts. So given the destiny of the City of St. Louis, the thought there was that perhaps that's not the best approach for the city. And so in lieu of that, the approach is to provide a set of site regulations and location regulations that would ensure that no matter where it was located within the appropriate zoning district, that the neighborhood and the areas would still be protected based on site and location requirements. So we are opting out of the state default buffer with this proposal. So this is the zoning chart that you'll see in the proposed legislation. The first four items are those items, those uses which are near exactly by the state's amendment two language. And then the fifth one is a catch-all. Because of the evolving industry, we can anticipate that there might be things in the future that we aren't sure about, and so we have added that catch-all. And I'll go through each one of these individually and show you this at the end of that. So for medical marijuana cultivation facilities, the first thing we did was obviously take the definition from the state's definition. And we also looked at our existing code to determine how we might currently regulate uses that are similar. And to that end, farming and truck farming and greenhouses were probably the two that were the most similar to sort of a growing or cultivation type facility. But I think you'd all agree that it's a little bit different, given that medical marijuana is a controlled substance, and, you know, will have a lot of implications with it. So while the scale and type of use could be similar, it's treated entirely separately due to the known issues that arise, including odor, for instance. So the proposal is therefore to be more restrictive with the medical marijuana cultivation facilities, while the application of such a use could fit well into the landscape of a commercial district which is near highway or major material. It may not be the case for all areas that have that. So by allowing the use in the age zoning district as a conditional use, the city can review and consider each facility and its surroundings separately to allow more flexibility, requiring requirements, or more stringent stipulations that are responsive to the area. On the other hand, by permitting them in the I through L districts where the mix of uses and density is greater, the city can provide a list of site stipulations applied to all facilities, so the problem of being included is much more, much simpler and more streamlined. So just to give you a visual, this is a map of where, by this proposal, the medical marijuana cultivation facilities would be conditional and permitted. Those are the neighborhood boundaries of the legislation. The next use on the list is the medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility. Again, the definition came from the state amendment two. The closest parallel we found, which exists in our current code, is the oil goods manufacturing from raw materials and bars and taverns and packaged liquor stores, which is also where the microbrewery fall as related use. A marijuana manufacturing facility is probably somewhere in the middle between an oil goods manufacturing, which is intended to be more for oil extraction processes which are incredibly intensive and create heavy nuisances, but it is a manufacturing facility nonetheless. And on the other hand, marijuana manufacturing is similar to a brewery or microbrewery, for instance, where the processing of alcohol can be intensive and produces odor, major temperature regulations, and vibrations, et cetera. So staff has recommended that by allowing the use of the conditional use, again, in the area of commercial district H, each facility in a large regional commercial area can be evaluated on a case-by-case scenario. An additional site specific requirement may be added. However, the use can be permitted in a higher density or mixed-use and industrial district where appropriate conditions imposed by overarching regulations are permitted. This is the map, it's the same as the one previously shown, because this is the same proposal, medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facilities be conditional and The third use is a medical marijuana testing facility. Again, the definition is same as the state amendment two language. And in our discussions with professionals and doing research regarding what the use looks like in other municipalities where this industry has been in place for some time, staff found that medical marijuana testing facilities are not very, if at all different from a laboratory. They will take small sample sizes and have mostly specific equipment equipped in a closed people's environment, like white coat lounge, et cetera. So the proposal here is to handle these facilities in the same manner as that to handle laboratories, which are currently being regulated, to not allow in the A through A districts, and permitted in the central business districts, commercial districts, I through L. This is a map of, by this proposal, where medical marijuana testing facilities could The next use is that of the medical marijuana dispensary facilities, which is the retail component of the industry. The closest parallel in our zoning code is a drugstore or, as you might call it, pharmacy. However, given that there is a potential and uncertainty for crime, which we'll talk about later, research has shown that locating these uses in a higher traffic area, such as in commercial districts, it is proposed that the dispensary facilities not be permitted in residential districts. They be conditional in the S neighborhood commercial districts and permitted in districts D through L. The reason for the conditional use in the S district is because some corner commercial sites are zoned S and should be evaluated on an individual basis with a potential to add additional requirements from the baseline which can consider the immediate surroundings of a site. I would also add that a corner drugstore is a neighborhood service that would be more likely to serve in the surrounding area, whereas medical marijuana dispensary facilities will be limited in number by the state, and therefore will be serving a larger market area, which would increase traffic and parking demand and could thus impact the character of residential areas. This is a map of where, by this proposal, medical marijuana dispensary facilities would be conditional and permitted. I probably feel it doesn't show as well, but you can see it sprinkled through there. This additional use, as previously mentioned, is kind of our catch-all for any medical marijuana related facility which does not fall specifically into one of the categories mentioned above. Like I said, it's a new and evolving industry, and it wouldn't be unreasonable to imagine that any type of facility could emerge. So anything that falls into this category would not be permitted in residential districts, just like the other uses, and would be condition-ruled in all other districts to be evaluated individually. This is a summary table that we showed previously, again, using all districts. Next, I'll go through some of those site-specific requirements that we talked about, which would be applicable to medical marijuana facilities. These site regulations, no matter where the facility is located, would be applicable, and the surrounding area would be protected thus from related issues and needs. So to give you a brief overview of what those sort of issues or impacts could be and what the unique considerations are of this type of use, I just kind of wanted to go over the huge impact that come from this new industry, as well as some implications on our existing regulatory context, so the overlapping types of end of the nation. So with regard to the crime issue, there have been multiple studies which have reviewed the crime statistics near medical marijuana dispensary facilities, but I would say that they vary widely. So there's really no ultimate decision as to whether or not it affects crime or how it affects it. In some instances, it seems to go up at first, or then decrease, and other instances it seems to increase. More facilities have closed. So given that there's no clear correlation, through their recent evolution of medical marijuana regulations, various states and local jurisdictions have passed security requirements to address crime or potential crime in these facilities. While a majority of jurisdictions at this point have only required security plans to be submitted, then they're reviewed and approved by their police department, some jurisdictions, including the state of California and the city of Chicago, have enacted more specifically, specific security-oriented requirements. This approach, which is new, ensures that security measures are applied uniformly and equally to the type of facility, including, and has included, things such as 24/73 personnel, fireproof safe, and vaults for inventory or cash, et cetera. I would add that, as many of you probably know and have heard discussions, that the these facilities are all cash, and so this is kind of unusual because the use is not federally permitted. A lot of federally insured banks will not allow these facilities to bank with them, so they are carrying around a lot of cash, and the value of these plants, each plant can be between $5,000 and $10,000. So, you know, this is unique to where we're at in this situation and why this is important. So given that the requirement for security plans could allow for arbitrary requirements set forth by a particular viewing department, the City of St. Louis finds that uniformly applying security measures is a best practice approach for an evolving and newly regulated industry with a unique set of issues. The City of St. Louis is therefore proposing security requirements by, they apply to each facility type, and I'll go over these shortly. A lot of lead-up to these regulations. Another consideration which is unique to the industry is the odor. While many people can assume that the distinct odor would be emitted by a person who is smoking a substance, the U anticipated that it has also provided a strong odorous presence in, near, and around cultivation and manufacturing facilities. So since this has been discovered and many news articles have been written throughout the country, municipalities have begun requiring odor mitigation technologies be incorporated into the design and redesign of a building for these types of facilities. So again, I'll go over those in a few slides. With regard to the regulatory context here in the City of St. Louis, consideration was given to how proposed regulations would interact with existing or proposed overlay districts. Given that the proposal is adding an entirely new regulating subject and a chapter, these proposed regulations would be applicable to all underlying districts regardless of the overlay. Should the various areas with existing overlays or future overlays wish to regulate these uses differently than the underlying zoning districts, they will be required to amend the overlay district regulations to address them specifically. Finally, you may remember that in January of 2019, the planning commission reviewed the recommended approval for the zoning tax amendments, which would allow us to be in compliance with the state statutes for the N and SEC regulations for the small cell wireless facilities. The legislation was subsequently introduced as a board of Alderman, it's gone through the final process, all the way through construction, and this bill includes language, which, if you may remember, does not permit any use prohibited by federal law, federal regulation, or federal agency in the I districts and beyond. So given that medical marijuana is still used prohibited by federal law, staff does recommend that this language be amended to ensure that it only refers to wireless facilities. So this report will be a separate bill that would be proposed over time, but it is included in part of this proposal. Now to go over the site regulations, most of the regulations will be related to the industry considerations that we discussed earlier, crime, odor, and there's one obvious for other regulations. All other regulations you'll see have been derived from what other cities are doing and requiring in areas where these type of facilities have been in place for a long time. So for example, we did look at Chicago, San Francisco, Washington DC, et cetera.
Have a drink of water.
Thank you.
Take a sip.
So here you see nine regulations. These regulations would apply to all facility types, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and dispensary. The first six items are related to safety and security, and will ensure that appropriate measures are taken to provide a safe and secure environment and deter crime. Two of the items are related to nuisances, and the final regulation is simply to ensure that they also comply with the state requirements. We should note that the state has begun putting out their draft requirements, but not all are available yet, so as they come out, we will be reviewing them to ensure that no inconsistency there occurring. While all facilities will need to comply with these nine regulations, each of the facility types are all different, so there are some uniquely tailored requirements. These three additional requirements are proposed for both cultivation and manufacturing Two are additional items related to safety and security, while one additional requirement is related to odor mitigation, which I alluded to earlier in the presentation. While odor can be a subjective issue and may depend on a person's individual senses, the proposed requirements are to ensure that adequate devices are in place to neutralize or remove odor prior to the emission of the atmosphere. All the mechanisms will be reviewed, inspected, and approved by the mechanical section of the building division, and should a nuisance occur, the building division will be able to inspect the devices to ensure that they're working properly and/or require additional devices to be put in place. The testing facilities would need to comply with the nine or two requirements that we went over earlier, and these two additional safety and security regulations. Our understanding is that many existing laboratories may consider incorporating medical marijuana testing within their current operation, and I want to be clear that the regulations proposed for these... proposed before you hear are for facilities where medical marijuana will be the sole or primary test subject. Those laboratories which want to incorporate medical marijuana testing as part of their current operation or a part of a larger operation which doesn't include medical marijuana, then those laboratories would not need to comply with the additional site regulations due to the fact that the medical marijuana testing is not the primary use, but rather an accessory to the general laboratory use. Finally, given that the dispensary facilities provide a retail and advertising component, the following additional overarching and following additional requirements are in addition to the nine that we spoke about earlier, and they're recommended to ensure that the character of neighborhoods can be preserved, but also to ensure that the dispensary facility can sell associated medical marijuana supplies to qualified stations as a primary kicker. These type requirements can be split into three general types. The first two proposed regulations are to provide clarity to those on the premises and/or those opening dispensaries, what they can and can't do. And the next four requirements are for safety and security-related measures which are specific to a facility which is outward-facing and will interact with the public. And finally, the last four requirements are for the regulation of signage for these uses. Unlike the three other marijuana-related uses, dispensary facilities will want signage, but these requirements provide some limitations on that. PDA staff and their regulation project team have researched, reviewed, and prepared some amendments and recommend approval of the citywide zoning tax changes, and PDA staff has reviewed that was so given this and found that they are compliant with the strategic use plan and therefore recommend approval.
You did your work, you did your work. We'll open the four questions, we'll begin as we would with Commissioner Young, if she has any, because she's on the phone, never want to leave her out, and you're more than welcome to come back at another time.
Gosh, I don't know where to start, and I'm interested to hear questions and comments from the other commissioners, I may defer a bit, but, you know, one issue that I continue to have, and this is a bit of a NIMBY attitude, but I live in a central business district, and while there's more residential, you know, there's more people residing in my block than are in most neighborhoods, we don't have the privilege of a lot of residential neighborhoods, and so I continue to struggle with that a bit. I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but that's, you know, looking at this, I think that's my only concern, and I'll go back on mute and listen to what everybody else has to say.
Commissioner Boyd, any questions?
So, the commission would be recommending approval, so just a zoning change, just the bill that's proposed by Alderman Code?
Yeah.
Okay, so listen to your presentation, it suggested that there be no signage, I kind of got lost or confused, if the signage was related to different type of facilities? So, if you're a dispensary, you can have signage, but if you're a testing facility, research and development, you can't have signage, basically?
That is correct. If you are solely testing medical marijuana, then there would be no business signage permitted under this proposal.
Okay, so, as I'm looking through the proposed board bill on page eight, where on line eight, it talks about, let's go to line seven, first off, before we get there, I'm sure I know where I am, so I'm under B, so we talked about B, let me go back to seven, so that's seven, line six, "A medical marijuana dispensary facility shall comply with the following, blah, blah, blah." And then it talks about signage, that's what caught my attention, so a dispensary can have signage.
I'm sorry, you want to stop there, page seven?
Sorry, yeah, because I want to make sure I was in, you've got to follow B and C and all that stuff. So, B talks about a medical marijuana dispensary facility, shall comply with the following, one through, so then I flip over to line seven, "The facility shall not erect or use any free standing signage and shall not have any temporary signage, blah, blah, blah," and on to line 11. So, that's specific to a dispensary, correct?
Correct.
But I didn't read anything in here that prohibited the...
On the other facilities?
Yeah.
It would be on page... It would be on the same page, page seven, number, I'm sorry, number 12, line one.
Twelve, say it again?
It's the first line on page seven.
Page seven, okay, the facility should not have a signage. Okay, and then, I'm trying to, I need to go back to, oh, that's those site requirements, Just a little control, so that has to do with site requirements?
Right.
Of a medical marijuana facility, okay.
So, all medical marijuana.
Got it, okay, all right.
Commissioner Mason?
Yeah, I have a handful of questions. First has to do with the thousand-foot buffer, so we're saying we're not doing that?
Correct.
But is it either do it or not do it, and can there be like wiggle room in between? Like, could we say, for example, there will be no, any of these uses directly adjacent to a school, church, daycare, blah, blah, blah?
There could, that was not sort of the approach after looking at how exact it is and how many conflicts there were.
Would that be a reason not to explicitly say that?
So, with that in mind, let's just take a pause and realize that the work on this has been following what the state has given us, looking at best practices that have happened in other jurisdictions and have been implemented, what other jurisdictions within the state of Missouri are proposing, and looking at our zoning code. In that, that's the team that's done that, Cecilia, Rebecca Wright, and Mary Hart. So, I want to just say, and Cecilia answers, let's make sure Becky, if you want to pipe in, or Mary, please do.
I was going to repeat that question. I was thinking, you know...
So, I think, could it be, could we put in the bill, in the language, that no facility related to medical marijuana be directly adjacent to a school, daycare, church?
So, like literally not right next to it?
Literally, or whatever, you know, hundred foot, whatever.
So, there are different approaches, certainly one option would say if you have site requirements that included not being adjacent to it, we are allowed to do that. As a policy, when we looked at this, we felt that it would be overly complicated based on the identity of the city and the kinds of, I guess, the volume, the number of potential conflicts that may arise, and the fact that we need to have one, as in, a district, a city that is part of a district that goes into North County. So, we started to think that it might become problematic. There are a lot of city facilities right now, very obviously, you know, some community members, and recognition, like you have an opportunity to talk to the city attorney at this point, and if they're thinking about reviewing thousands of places too.
Yeah, I can see where thousand foot might be problematic, but I would still feel, my personal opinion is that if it was spelled out adjacent, directly adjacent, that would still leave a lot of wiggle room about where it is.
I would add one thing, there's a complication in that there's no, while it does give, you know, a specific list of what those things are that it can't become in conflict with, there's no really definition of what a primary school is, a secondary school, or one that churches, one that child daycare center is. So, do, you know, that would need to be established as well. You know, is the child daycare center that is, you know, is run in storefronts, does that count, is being used by all students, public or not count, et cetera? So, that's just one thing to consider.
Thank you. Mary, would you talk, just a little bit about, remind everybody about the conditional use process, when that's kicked in?
So, any of the medical marijuana, any of the medical marijuana uses that require a condition is, they would go through that process, the hearings, with the hearing officer. At that hearing, you can look at sites, the big, you know, care, and put it just on conditions on it, if it felt like, you know, based on testimony and what we saw, or by society, or if you had a lot of opposition from the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Condition that uniquely did it would result in that, or it might be something that we would consider not approving, based on what came out of the condition.
But if it's not something that requires, that's specifically allowed and doesn't have to go through that process, then theoretically, you could end up with one right next to a school.
So, the filters are that the conditional use in some cases would be a...
Would be a stop, but not all.
But in the, for instance, in the dispensary, the conditional in the F district, which is the one that's most prevalent in adjacent to residential districts, residential uses and residential zoning, so that would be conditional on the names we tend to speak of.
So, that's a major concern. The other is more of an architect-y thing. So, one of these regulations that you shouldn't, you can't see any of the merchandise or anything from the outside, and what I fear that's going to, and you also can't have like bars or mesh in front of your windows, what I fear that what's going to happen is you're going to have a lot of these dispensaries with blacked-out windows.
So, I have a comment about that.
Yeah.
I do not think that that will happen. They're actually, it's almost like they have two sets of rooms. You come into the dispensary, and there's like almost a holding room maybe for the general public where they drop off mail, and then there, you have to show ID, you always get to give you the VIP.
Right, yeah, yeah.
This is where you get to go into the special stuff, yeah, you have to show your ID, you can only get going with people with you.
Right.
I mean, there's a whole process that they have to take to just figure out as far as how that will work.
Yeah.
So, I don't anticipate, because of the fact that you can't even anticipate that until you go into the second room.
Right.
I don't anticipate that they will be putting that type of product up, you know, in the front.
That's all how the interior space is laid out. I mean, if the entire frontage of the store is the holding room, then yes, you wouldn't have to worry about, but if they split it up halfway like that, maybe you'd have one section that's the holding room, one section that's the second VIP room.
I would mention also that that, what Becky is speaking about, is one of the requirements from the state that they recently put out.
Yeah, yeah, but you could have a requirement that sort of forces their hand to make sure that if you have these dispensaries coming in, that they use clear glass in there, in there, because a blacked-out window is just as good as a, in retail.
Commissioner Boyd? Now, I was looking at, while you guys are talking, I was looking at the ordinances in Detroit and Chicago and a few other cities, and it looks, this is pretty standard fare language, it seems like, because I don't see a huge variation, maybe just like semantic. I mean, it looks, it looks fine to me, it's not a whole lot of...
Commissioner Boyd?
I would say, what a fun professional job you've done, doing research and things together, I'm just really impressed. My only question is just more...
That's a collective view, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just think the team has done a brilliant job on it. And I think the only question I have is more probably a zoning code relic, that as I'm looking at where you can have dispensaries, I see these very clear kind of commercial corridors along the North Hill, on Del Mar, and pretty consistently along Wendell, for instance, so I'm not being NIMBY, but why is there not so much of that in South City?
So, much of what, which...
You don't see these clear corridors.
I think you do, because you see brownways, but not pretty extensive, you see dairies, just a lot of yellow.
But there's yellow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's an interesting, I'm not saying that's an issue, but just interesting, kind of wanting to talk on that as far as going.
Some of this dates back to the time of street curbs.
Oh, that was interesting.
Well, and that's the rail as well, the road is different.
You know, I think Scott, it wasn't just a system, they had their wanting to have these dispensaries, I think they do, they're marketing it, because it's hard to look appealing and, you know, fit in with the street scale, so I haven't seen any issues with it.
Commissioner Brad?
No.
Commissioner Collins?
No question.
Commissioner Conway?
No question.
Commissioner Peterson?
No question.
Back to our commissioner.
Yeah, I'll follow a question with Rebecca. It says in the, I just had it, in the, I guess, the regulation that onsite use, there shall be no onsite consumption of marijuana, marijuana-infused products on the premises. But if you're producing marijuana-infused brownies, don't have to sample them?
So, that would actually have to go to a testing facility.
Oh.
You don't get to sample them, as much as you may, it's not brownie.
No, the testing facility, they get to do all that stuff, but once you get to the dispensary, they don't get to test the product to make sure that it's the quality that they're looking for.
And that's what I...
What they do.
So, I just read over the whole testing facility requirements, and there's actually a whole, they actually have to have like a lot of very highly educated people running the testing facilities, just like a normal laboratory. They have standards that they have put into place as to how to measure, and they actually have to test the various different chemicals that are in the actual product. And so, it looks like the state has, and I have to admit, part of it's a little bit over my head because I don't have that specific area of expertise from a scientific standpoint when I look over this, so, but it looked like they were putting into place pretty significant, you know, testing standards to ensure that the quality is controlled in place. So, as far as the bakery ingredients, I can't speak to that, whether they're, you know, get the high quality, in that respect, it's outside of the marijuana, but they are testing the whole entire product to make sure that it, you know...
There won't be simple Saturday, I promise.
Becky, would you remember, remind us of one thing, is that this is not that you have, I get a little pain in the back, and I go into the dispensary and say, can you have something to tell me? They will have these, patients will have identification cards.
So, there is a process, like an application process, you have to get a certification from your physician to, that qualifies you, and there's specific conditions laid out in the amendment, cancer, epilepsy, cataracts, but there's a number of other ones that are specifically listed that will basically be kind of the standards, I believe, conditions that they're looking at, there may be some exceptions where you actually have to have these certain conditions from the physician to decide why and what specific condition is the medical marijuana. But then, the state will review that, it will issue the ID card. The people who are going to this are, you know, are eligible to receive medical marijuana and be able to use it, and be able to cultivate it, it's very, you know, specific to the standards laid out by the state.
Has there been research on black market activities?
Yes.
And how bad is it? How prevalent is it?
You know, it fits in with the question about crime and also the issues about the black market even around the dispensaries. You know, one of the concerns that you can have around the dispensaries are criminals targeting the dispensary because it's a cash-based business, selling a product that would otherwise be illegal on the market, right? So, the concern is that you could have people actually lingering around, just like you do at like cash checking establishments, and we have had that, that cash establishment here, in fact, we had one move up to the second floor of a business because they realized of the downtown, you know, building, because they realized that their customers are no longer being targeted when they did that, because they couldn't see them in there. So, these are the kinds of concerns that come up, what degree and what problems, I think everybody assumes there will be some black market industries that will develop as a result of it. Could it also help, because they could maybe get people who would otherwise be doing opioids, doing marijuana instead? I mean, we have to kind of look at this as the overall, you know, societal issue and the types of concerns that could arise from it, and I think they do see this diversion where some people are now turning to marijuana instead of using opioids, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyd?
Yeah. Yeah, two, two more. One, first one has to do with the odor, um, and requiring these mitigation devices. It's one thing to require one, but, you know, is there any way to measure to make sure that, that they're actually doing what they're saying to do? And would it make sense to put a requirement saying you're not?
So, so the part, um, one thing is that we put in there, it's not technical, you know, um...
Oh, is that in the language?
Yeah, in the bill. So you can't, if you can detect it outside the property boundary, on a, at that point, you know, yes. But there are also devices that are being created, um, and there's one that's now in use in Colorado, where there's a whole argument they're turning about, that it's about hot stuff, and the kinds of issues that are happening with the hot stuff, and how they're trying to basically address the concerns of the manufacturing aspect of it as well as the situation. And it looks like they've got good mechanisms in place, and I believe Cecilia and Mary actually two facilities.
Right. Just to add a little more to that, we have to understand that the Missouri county officials are developing a set of guidelines in regard to the odor. So that won't fall into the zoning, that will fall into the building codes. So this is where the mechanical section would come in, and then they would inspect and make sure that the, um, equipment is working properly, or if any additional equipment that they would require. But beyond that, I mean, and it's not like they're wanting to be extended, that they can expect her to determine that.
Yeah.
We really need somebody with that specialization from the mechanical section doing that.
Right.
And there was a mention, the other members of the team included, other folks and the mayor's office staff, Mary just mentioned that they did a field visit, and in the state of Missouri, there is a very narrow allowed marijuana for people with epilepsy.
Correct.
And they toured a facility in the state that is cultivation or...
Cultivation.
Cultivation. Medical marijuana purposed for epilepsy.
Okay. Second, second question, so my understanding that all of these facilities, except for the dispensaries, will require armed security, correct? But dispensaries, no security personnel required?
This was, um, something that we, you know, struggled with as far as trying to make a policy decision on.
Yeah.
Didn't want to create, you know, one of the things that's in the amendment is that you can't have undue burdens in regulations. We did not want to have any regulations that would be undue burdens. They are going to have to comply with all the requirements the state has as far as security measures, setting through cameras, um, as well as, um, the department.
Do other states or cities have, their department that dispensaries have, security personnel? And there's no, in terms of study that you guys have looked at, that has no effect, or does that have an effect on perceived crime or actual crime in the area?
Well, we went to visit the, uh, the facility, um, we, we spoke with the, at the time, and we asked him what, what he thought as far as, um, what crime has he been through. He has also opened facilities in Denver, and, um, you know, he said he's had, he's had three incidents, um, each one a little bit crazier than the next. Um, but he said the best, um, sort of crime prevention thing that he has had and has been done is to have personnel in, on the front desk at all times.
And that was a cultivation facility, where you can also imagine the, the volume of cash?
Yeah.
Pretty huge.
Yeah.
From what I can tell, I was going through and just looking at cities that have had, he's on the books for a while, and the revisions they've made, it looks like this plan kind of addresses a lot of those revisions.
Exactly.
Right, so there's a benefit, I guess, of seeing a little way to the game. Yeah, so it looks like al- almost every city that has had it for several years has revised their ordinance to be a look more like this. And, um, yeah, I mean, I guess that's a good sign.
And I'm sure we have the opportunity to revise, too, by, it didn't need to be...
And anticipating that states may involve in the process, or, you know, regulate the limits, so...
And remember, Commissioner, as you're, as you're doing that, looking at that, that in the attachment to the, to the resolution that's before the planning commission, is some of our condensing of the research in sort of a structured form, it's called the white paper, and covers a lot of bases.
So if we pass this here tonight, then this is the exact language that the Board of Alternatives would be voting on?
So, no.
No.
We're, we're, we're passing what's in the presentation and, and regulation. Uh, the board bill, which is in draft, could have typos, uh, but it should be mirroring, it should mirror what we approve.
So, for example, I feel strongly that there should be language saying there's no dispensaries or whatever next to a school or something, and I should vote against that, because that, because that, yeah.
You should also propose an amendment to...
Yeah, so... Because, I think that's just the batteries, Cecilia. So you, so we're on, uh, the resolution that's before you incorporates the white paper by, uh, by, the white paper has in essence the slides that, the walkthrough between that show this grid in total, and then this grid individually. If you wanted to make an amendment, you can make an amendment to what those items are that are part of our true resolutions, are not just illustrative. Meaning the, the language in the resolution itself and the language that we're attaching to the white paper. So long with the way of saying, you're going to make a recommendation that we change this chart in some fashion, or add some...
Or you can talk to Alderman Colder and ask if he would consider making amendment in his bill.
Both are, both are, both...
Well, what, what would you suggest is the better move?
Um, I would ask Alderman Colder, because at this point, I mean, we can make whatever recommendation we want, but whatever he puts in that bill and gets passed on the floor is what's going to happen. For Alderman, um, well, Jack Colder's responsible, for sure.
Okay.
I have a couple more questions when you guys get a chance.
Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, two related questions. Um, I guess, you know, I know you said some of these words need to be defined, but as far as a church is concerned, I mean, obviously a school or daycare that's are registered, um, how do you know if a church is in a specific building or not? Um, and then somewhat related question, um, it says that, uh, it's at the time of application. So, um, does that preclude a school, daycare, or church from moving into that zone after, you know, a dispensary or testing facility is then located in that site?
Uh, so to your first question, that kind of goes to the issue of the thousand-foot buffer, or, you know, regulating it based on, on those uses, that they're not very well-defined. So there are plenty of storefront churches, um, you know, that do or do not have sort of a sign that indicates that it is used as such, so there's some gray area there. Um, and also, no, it would not preclude a school or one of the complications to locate after the medical marijuana facility was in place.
Those difficulties, Nicole, in determining that is one of the reasons why we opted not to use the distance buffer.
I want to add something, too, is that, see, when you take a look at their website, they're in the process of still writing a lot of their rules. And there's actually a link where they are going to have additional definitions added. So some of that may be put up once they add definitions, we don't know, it's just kind of something at this point.
Any more, Commissioner Yeo?
No.
All right, then, with that, we'll entertain any motion that is placed before the floor.
I move that we adopt.
It's been moved and, and seconded that we adopt, the zoning sex change that is listed now.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Cohen?
Present.
Commissioner Benton?
Present.
Commissioner Boaz? Commissioner Bradley? Uh, Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Reese? Oh, not present, uh, Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Abstain.
And Chair Stroud?
Aye.
And do we want to revisit Alderman Cohen? Or Commissioner Benton?
What's the difference between present and abstain?
We've got six ayes, so the motion will pass. So for the record, then, it'll be six ayes, one abstention, and two present.
Clarification, like, what's the difference for me between present and abstain, anything?
Very little.
Pronunciation. A lot of time you abstain, you may abstain for personal reason, a conflict of interest, uh, potentially, and present is just...
To reflect that there were six ayes.
Six ayes, two...
And the motion passed.
And the motion passed.
I'm sorry, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ayes, and the motion passed.
With that, thank you very much for the work that that team put in, did, you owe them a job, I'm sure, you're, you're, uh, it makes sense to call it, and there will not be simple clarity. Not yet.
Two quick things. One, I appreciate the work of all the team, and appreciate Cecilia being able to tolerate. When I looked over, did you do something else for me, too? Multiple talents that she has. The other thing is to remember, yes, you, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, have advanced these, initiated these, it goes into the legislative process. And remember, part of the legislative process, there will be a public hearing.
Delegated items, do you want to speak to that? There is, there will not be a, um, a closed session at this time, so our next meeting is scheduled for May first. Lou, or Jeremy?
I'm going to move it back.
Deluda second.